Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, September 15th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and silence.
Mr. Keys. Moment of silence. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and for this time that you assembled this council. We ask for your help to make wise and prudent decisions on behalf of the city. We ask to remember all those who are suffering grief, hurt, and harm within our city limits and around the country. We ask this in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of the Wednesday, September 1st, 2021, city council meeting and bills for payment on September 17th, 24th, and October 1st, 2021. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. I don't think we have anyone here for repository sales. That would take us to public comments. And we have Blair Mead.
Go right up to the mic.
If the public can please state your name and address clearly.
That one there.
Oh, that one. On the floor.
It's a little comic relief.
Name, address, and five minutes.
My name is Blair Mead, and I reside at 800 Dutch Road in Fairview, Pennsylvania, 16415. I am the owner of Blair Mead Designs and Exalo Technology. I've brought my upper management team with me tonight. And we have exciting news that we've moved into the city, into our temporary offices at Radius Co-op. And we will eventually move into our longer-term facility in December. We're negotiating the terms of a lease and also looking to acquire a location, possibly all on Cherry Street. I'm not at liberty right now to say the exact location because it's all under negotiation. But really, I just wanted to talk briefly about what our vision for Erie, what we're already doing, and what we plan to do. And our, you know, manufacturing operation, which we started as a wearable art product. It was an accessory line for women. And then eventually it became a sustainable clothing brand, and from there it morphed into a wearable technology company. What really set me on this course of developing technology to incorporate into my line was not only to set it apart from other brands, but to do something that would, people would not only enjoy, but that they would need. The specific technology is like thermoelectric core technology. Basically, it cools you down or it warms you up, depending on the weather. In Erie, we'd probably always have it set at warm. But, you know, it really became obvious to me that we needed to do something in an era of heat waves and heat domes. And my son actually happens to be on the autistic spectrum, and he suffers from heat sensitivity. So this is actually an endeavor straight from my heart. And I, you know, I kind of just made a plan, you know? I was going to move forward with this technology, but I couldn't do it by myself. So I enlisted a team. I recruited two of my upper management members, actually, are not from Erie, but they've chosen Erie to be their new home. Welcome Gloria Anifon. Gloria is originally from Ghana, Africa, and she set on a journey to come to the US. It's a wonderful story. Got her master's in fashion from Kent State University, but she ran her own factory back in Ghana, and she knows production from A to Z. She's ready to train a workforce. And our goal is to train a workforce from the community, recruit from the community, train on the job, implement an internship at the high school and local university level so that we can then also employ from that streamline. And Gloria has laid it all to paper so eloquently and nicely on, I think it's page 21 of our business plan. So thank you, Gloria. We're going to start with about 15 individuals in production, but we intend on becoming profitable and growing. So that's to start with, but it's not where it's going to end. We're just going to continue to hire and recruit and revitalize our community workforce. That is our vision, that is our goal. Our other priorities are inclusion and diversity. I have been lucky enough to get talent from diverse, you know, backgrounds. And so I just feel like it's an honor to have you all here with me. There is no I in team, so thank all of you. My other key person, DJ Cray, he's my head engineer. He's really gotten this technology off the ground and set us on course to get the patent. We're going to get three patents to defend our technology. We're going to get a patent on the design level, the systems level, and the software level so that when we do file, we have a robust case against any challenges, and we plan to do it all here. DJ is originally from Erie. He is talent that was just ripe for the picking. I like to say I stole him from Rapid Mold, but he's like, nope, I left willingly to follow you. So he quit his job to join my team, and it's an honor because we couldn't be doing any of this without you. You're going to make a huge difference. He is also ready to train a sizable workforce. We're going to do an electronics assembly team, and he wants to take on interns in the areas of robotics, 3D printing, electrical engineering, and computer programming. Yes, I got it. Did I get it all? I got it all. Okay. And then my next key person is Reem Almiski. Reem is not just a soulmate friend, she shares my vision for Erie. She is a lifelong Erieite, but her parents originally came from Syria. She came here as a very, you know, young girl, but has made Erie her home. She speaks fluent Arabic. She also has a background in mental health, as I do, and has seen up close and personal the issues with the youth in our city. Understands the problem, as I do, and wants to help me provide a solution. I'm going to appoint her, right now she is a consultant, but I'm going to appoint her as director of community relations once we get, you know, a little further into our plan here. And last but not least.
Blair, we love you, but we need to kind of.
All right.
Okay.
So, Blair is a soul of whip. Our priorities are inclusion, diversity, and.
Any of the other folks can speak. Thank you. That's the kind of energy we need in this city, though. Nice job. Name and address, please.
My name is Freda Tepper. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. It's nice to see you all. So we've been seeing on the agenda items, a million here, a million there for some redevelopment project, for some enterprise loan coming out of the ARP money. I'm concerned that we're going to turn around and all the money's gone, and where did we go with it? Where was the plan to put the money where it needed to go the most? To aid the people most affected by COVID? To assist neighborhoods that are underserved and disadvantaged populations? To support transit, to assist neighborhoods to organize so that they can seek funding for needed projects, et cetera? I'm just concerned that, you know, we just keep giving this money to this very interesting business that wants an enterprise loan or whatever, but it's going to all be gone, and we haven't taken care of the people who really need it. That's one thing. Parks. I really don't understand what Parks is doing in Public Works. I really think Parks should be somewhere else in the city's organization. I don't think it's the right place. I don't think they've shown that they are really aware of how to manage vegetation and resources for people. Once again, I will point out to you that there are porta potties in Baldwin Park. None of them are accessible. Except for the porta potties that were installed for the Rib Fest, the porta potties at Perry Square are not accessible. This is not legal. If you're going to provide amenities, they have to be available to anybody. There's sediment on the trails in Baldwin Park as a result of the clearing that was done. It's on the paved sidewalk. I walk there. It makes it slippery, and I wish it would be dealt with. As far as the bayfront, I don't like the project. I think it's a backward move. This is the exact opposite direction the rest of the country is going in. We are being asked, once again, to give up our connection to the bayfront to make it easier for people to move faster through town. We're taking them from the south, going south, north, to the bayfront, and then they're going south again to move on, to go home. That's not going to help us in Erie, and it isn't going to really give us a connection to the bayfront. But if you must approve this ridiculous project, please make sure that in the construction project, that you don't result in pedestrians being cut off from access or with little or no information about how to travel safely, including people who are blind and visually impaired, including people who have mobility challenges. But this is the wrong move. It's the wrong move. The roundabouts are wrong, the added traffic is wrong. I would like the city to be real about how they handle the quality of life ordinance. The quality of life ordinance should apply not just to broken windows, not just to tall grass, but it should apply to unmaintained sidewalks by commercial areas. It should apply to things that commercial and church and other properties don't take care of, that make it hard for me to walk, that make it unpleasant to walk. I think it's unfair that you use the quality of life to ding homeowners, but businesses are absolved from it. And every time I mention certain things to the arborist, she says, we don't, Public Works doesn't enforce quality of life. Only code enforcement does, and that's just not fair. My same concern about pedestrian access, oops, goes to the port projects as well as the bayfront. Please ensure that during construction, that pedestrians understand what's going on and that they have decent access and that it be detectable warning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sheila Ellen Wohlgrah. I reside at 2011 Fairmount Parkway here in the city of Erie, Pennsylvania. It was George Washington that said that to rightly govern the world, you cannot do it without God or the Bible. And so I challenge you as government tonight to acknowledge God in all that you do and allow him to direct your path. With all the money that has come through the city and that is coming through in the future, there's nothing allocated or allotted for the poor. And according to the word of God, the poor you will have with you always. And so those that are talking about canceling culture, that cancels their culture because the poor is going to always be with us. The Bible is specific in how you should treat the poor among you. I do puzzles in the Erie Times News on a daily basis. And yesterday, the celebrity cipher read as follows. Mistreatment of other people because, quote, "I'm better than you are" is such a bad part of the world. And I've experienced it in what I call the plantation here in Erie for the past 25 years. $200 million, our Democrat governor, with the power to veto, allotted that amount to a horse racing fund, knowing that we have poor amongst us. We have citizens living on our streets, dying on our streets, and yet that amount of money can go to a racing horse fund. If I'm mistaken, please correct me. $30 million was allocated to a failing public school system. Children can't read, can't write, can't add without the help of a calculator. But yet there's nothing for the poor. Adequate housing. There was a man that I saw on the news not long ago asking for assistance in bringing his house up to par. And I believe it was Mayor Shemper told him to go to the Sisters of St. Joseph for help. Well, you need money to go to the Sisters of St. Joseph's. That's not a free program. You have to have money to participate in that program. And yet our governor can give $200 million to a racing horse fund, and yet for the poor, there's nothing. That's sad. And if we want to change, the change starts with you. It starts with a heart change. There's not a commission, $302 million to form a commission to tell you what we need. We need housing, adequate housing, affordable housing. That's what poor people need. Senior citizens could use an exemption from having to pay especially a school tax. I mean, I spoke to the school board. I let them know. I was educated in a segregated public school system, was introduced to books in first grade, learned how to read in first grade in a segregated public school system, Muskogee, Oklahoma, to be exact. I was writing in cursive in third grade. I was solving algebraic equations in seventh grade. You have high school students that can't read cursive. And I'm speaking as a retired substitute teacher in the Erie School District. I officiated football, I believe, with this gentleman here, the city attorney. It's sad. I've been here 25 years. I've seen no change in the city, nothing. But there's always, there's commission, commission, there's a commission for this, a commission for that. And where's all this money going? All of the money that's unallocated. How much of that money will Mr. Witherspoon be hand-delivering to Bishop Brock on a Sunday? How much of that allocated money is going to be going over there when poor people can use it in their hands? Acknowledge God because you will give an account for how you treat the poor among you. The Lord has told us, threaten not yourself because of evil doors, because they will soon be cut off. You will be judged on how you judge the poor, on how you treat the poor among you. That $3.2 million that you're going to use to form a commission, it can be better used on housing. It could be better used on healthcare for those that still don't have it. I plead with you to take heed to Second Chronicles 7:14, and I'll leave you with this. And it says, "If my people, who are called by my name, would humble themselves, turn from your wicked ways, and seek my face, then will I hear from heaven. I will forgive your sins; I will heal your land." That's where we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've never done this, so is it okay if I just step up?
Name and address.
Okay. I'm Annie Edgett, and I live at 4110 Westminster Boulevard. So I'm here on the behalf of a client of mine whose house is to be sold September 27th for back taxes. for back taxes, and I'm hoping to stop, prevent that from happening, either delay it or prevent it altogether. I've spoken to a couple people on the city council already and the county council to see about options to prevent this from happening. So I'm going to try to not use names, because she gave me permission, but I'd rather just kind of talk about the details and see if there's any possibility we could avoid this. So the reasons I'm asking is my client is 11 years old, and she lives with her mom and her grandfather. She has intellectual disabilities, and there's mental health disabilities in the house, too, which is why I'm involved. COVID's been a tough year for them. There's a lot of protections for renters, but not so much for homeowners. So, you know, this would cause a lot of trauma for my client, I'm sure of it, as well as her mother. There are a lapse in services right now, because this happens frequently. I'm a blended case manager, and, you know, it seems like a lot of therapists and people involved with my clients are switching jobs, and then there's a lapse in service. So during this difficult time for the family, there's no therapy component to support this family. Family based is being accessed, but it's been difficult to access because there's a waiting list. So again, this is supposed to occur September 27th, which I believe is next week. Mom is a hard worker. She always maintains a job. She lost her last job and is already working again. She's, you know, doesn't get reimbursed very highly, but she is a hard worker. We did call Northwest Legal and the Bar Association, and, you know, there was no help there. There's not a lot of help, assistance, funding for back taxes. You can get help for rent and utilities and a lot of different things, but not back taxes. So I did call the Tax Bureau. They were lovely. They offered two payment options, and they require quite a bit of money down, as well as quite a bit of money each month, depending on which payment option you choose. And we are, I'm working with her mom's blended case manager, and my client's intellectual disabilities case worker, sports coordinator, who is probably having a baby right this minute, so she's kind of off the case for a little bit, too. She's a bit of a setback, but joy as well. We are accessing a payee for mom from Erie County Care Management. I'm working closely with other involved services to support. We had a JTP meeting to try to come up with solutions. Yeah, so, yeah, my goal would be to delay the sale or not look at it during a year of, again, COVID, or potentially waive fees. The fees are only $900, though. The bill was $8,100 in total. Then they said it was $5,300. It's a little bit complex, but, so it'd be nice to kind of look at that amount, too, and the income this family has, because it's really a wonderful thing, they own their home, and I'd like to help them keep that.
Thank you. Jim?
Mr. President, if you could leave some of the more personal information with the clerk's office. No guarantees on our end, but at least maybe we can look into it a little bit and see if there could be some type of arrangements made to help your client.
Great. So who?
But I know this is a little vague from what you're coming and telling us, but like I said, if you can leave a little more of the specifics with the clerk's office, we can get together with our solicitor and see if there's something.
Yeah.
No guarantees, but we can at least possibly look into, see if there's some help available.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other citizens to be heard?
I have two on the table, Mr. President.
Okay.
Okay, Art, you should be able to talk.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, other local city council members, gentlemen, ladies, gentlemen, mayors and staff.
Name and address, sir.
Yes. Art Leopold, 5341, Apple Grove Lane, Erie, PA 1656. I come this evening to talk about some information that I'm providing. I have asked a clerk to pass out to everyone some questions regarding the proposed IRG plan. There are questions from our water, our air rights. There are questions from the Green New Deal of Erie County. And also, there's a note from the Sierra Club on the statement they've made regarding the IRG plan. If you'd be so kind to take a look at those and think about them, share them, do as you like, but certainly residents and significant members of the community have questions. Also, I provided a flyer on the climate strike that's going to be held September 24th in Perry Square. That's an event that we had in 2019. It was a four-hour event. We had many children from the schools, lots of folks from the community. We had to skip 2020. So now we're back with just a one-hour event to address some situations and conditions regarding the environment and the climate. And then I wanted to alert you to the fact that on the 25th, that would be the Saturday, and the first day of the Blues and Jazz Festival, we're going to hold an electric vehicle car show up on the Upper Green Frontier Park. That will be one of clocked or clocked, and there's about 10 electric vehicles that are going to be exhibited or present, so people can kind of ask questions. Some of the owners will be there, and obviously some of us will be there to try to, you know, help out with some questions. So I just wanted to make council, the public, aware of those issues. I thank you very kindly for the time this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Elizabeth? Elizabeth, you'll have to unmute yourself.
I don't have any comments, Frank. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it, Mr. President.
We're done? Okay. Ms. Watson?
Mr. President? This takes us to new business. I wanted to note again that number five has been pulled from the agenda.
And number five is the trail structure. It's being pulled not because we don't want to deal with it, but because we don't have all the information we need yet. It will, it'll be back and soon. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Winarsky?
Move the balance of the agenda.
I hear move the balance, second?
Second.
Mr. Winarsky, second it. Any pull-ups?
Separation.
Separations.
I'd like to separate one and four.
One and four. Any others? Move the agenda?
Moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski.
Number one.
Reading of resolution by Mrs. Schoff, seconded by Ms. Allen. Resolve that City Council of the City of Erie, the following amount of the American Rescue Plan funds be transferred to the City of Erie Infrastructure and Brownfield Development Fund, Erie County Redevelopment Authority, 140 East 16th Street demolition, $750,000; Erie County Redevelopment Authority, 601, 645 West 12th Street demolition, $1,250,000; Erie County Redevelopment Authority demolition administration, $100,000. Discussion?
I wanted to, I'm voting in favor of this, but I think we, I had a question earlier today, actually from Art, who was on the Zoom tonight, saying, "Why are you giving this money here instead of getting it into the hands of people?" And I think it's, I guess we're going to have to keep communicating over and over and over again that the administration has given us a framework for how that money is going to be spent, that brownfield remediation and site development is one of the factors that has been designated in the framework. There's a lot of other money in here. It's not going to go away. I just want to reassure people, there are dollar amounts here. They're all going to be, they will all be vetted. We have a committee for council now with Mel, Michael, and I on ARP Committee. We sat in on a meeting last week about housing with the Erie Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie and with the Neighborhood Growth Partnership, where they provided a lot of feedback about the needs for housing, including the thing that the woman mentioned about, you know, some of the existing programs where you have to have matching funds. So people are aware that there are barriers that have existed that are going to be dealt with. So I just want to reassure people that this is the first of many projects that are going to come before city council, along with the fact that they are going to have been discussed and vetted by those, I hate the word stakeholders, but they're going to be there helping us to make really good decisions. And even though this really isn't pertinent, I guess, but I wanted to point out that, you know, I always have to say, let's make sure we have the facts correct. And some of you may have seen me kind of lifting my eyebrows when there was a reference to Governor Wolf wanting to spend $200 million on the horse racing fund. That's not what happened. Governor Wolf wanted to take $200 million from the horse racing development fund and put it into scholarships for the Nellie Bly Scholarship Fund, and the state legislature said no. They did not want to do that. So I know there's a lot of stuff to keep up with, a lot of different news. We aren't doing anything with horse racing funds or with the Nellie Bly Fund, but I just felt that it was in the interest of accuracy to let people know. That wasn't Governor Wolf. Governor Wolf was trying to do something different with those funds, so that's a separate bundle, nothing to do with ARP. But we have the framework, I believe, on the website, so you can go through here and you can see the different pots of money that the administration has tentatively divvied up. But real people are going to benefit from this. And I also want to let people know that in terms of that Quinte demolition, we've heard from people in the neighborhood, including Paul Gamble, that that needs to be taken care of. It's a neighborhood where, I remember I was there a few years ago, and some little kids across the street were telling me about rats running in and out of there. So there's an effort there to improve that neighborhood. So that's really the only reason I separated this, because we've had good discussion about this even before we got the ARP funding, good discussion in a small committee group, good outreach from Chris Groner to council members about this particular need. So I'm voting in favor of it. But just remember that horse racing fund, that is not Governor Wolf trying to take $200 million for horse racing. And this is, I'm not going one way or the other on horse racing, because we know Prescott Downs benefits from that, but as a journalist, I sure would like to see that Nellie Bly fund.
Very good.
I would like to see that Nellie Bly fund funded.
Any other comments?
I would like to say thank you, Liz, for all your comments. I agree with what you said. Thanks.
Mr. President, very brief. Just want to, people understand, too, by investing this money into these demolitions, it promotes future development in these, which includes future jobs and future tax entities for the city. So it's really a win-win-win. So it's something that needs to be addressed. It's been overdue, and we're fortunate enough that we have the capacity to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remind you that I'm still looking for help for the folks on a fixed income who suffer as much as everybody, anybody, ones that paid their water bills and paid their garbage bills and paid their taxes and are living on a fixed income. We need to do something for them. I think that would be transformational. So please look at it. Thank you.
Mr. President? Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say something similar to Mr. Winarsky, but I was also going to note that with these properties, I mean, a lot of them have been sitting there for a while. They weren't getting investment. Nothing was happening. So in my idea, when I see this type of investment going on, it has to happen to attract private investment. So it's kind of a balancing act. I know a lot of people don't like to put tax dollars, but it needs to be some investment, because some of these properties haven't been taken care of. We wish they were taken care of, but now we're going to invest in them, and they're going to make a neighborhood better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan. I guess we're ready to vote?
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Making passes, 7-0.
I pick this as the number four.
Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, that council and the proper city officials authorized to execute the roundabout maintenance agreement with the Department of Transportation, PENDOT, regarding the roundabout to be installed at State Route 4034 Bayfront Parkway and Sassafras Street Extension and State Route 4034 Bayfront Parkway and Holland. The agreement will remain in full force and effect indefinitely unless terminated as provided in the agreement. Discussion?
This is where I'm going to be. Can I talk about this? I pulled this out. I guess I'm kind of maybe the good cop, bad cop tonight, voting in favor of redevelopment, voting with the balance of the agenda for the other Parkway stuff. I thought about this a lot, but I'm voting my conscience, and I'm voting no on the roundabouts. And I want to explain why. First of all, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank PENDOT. I want to thank Brenda Sandberg from the port. I want to thank everybody who served on that coordinating committee. I want to thank those who are on the peer review committee. You did a ton of work. And, but I had these illuminating moments yesterday after going to the in-person meeting and then attending the teams meeting with the public. And what I realized is that we really gave PENDOT an impossible task. We said, "Speed up traffic and slow it down to ease congestion by motor vehicle traffic and to make the Bayfront better for pedestrians and bicyclists. Accommodate neighborhood residents and tourists and provide an efficient travel route for traffic from Erie's working port." We've been told that we wanted an iconic connection to the Bayfront, and that we wanted to reassert Erie's pedestrian scale. At the same time, we're trying to make it quicker to get from workplaces downtown to homesteads in the suburbs. The problem is, we never had the will or the guts to develop an overall waterfront master plan. The port has one. The port did its homework. The Convention Center Authority has one. Destination Erie looked at the waterfront, and so did Erie refocus. But we never focused on how to establish a top priority. And in my view, that top priority should have been taking a road that was developed with good intentions to open up the Bayfront and to truly make it a Parkway. And when I asked PENDOT yesterday if they knew the average speed on the Parkway, no, they did not. They've done traffic studies, but never a speed study. So PENDOT could not tell me with data how fast all those speeders are going. I've asked for flashing signs to tell motorists the speed limit, hoping that it might at least slow them down for a time, but I was told such signs don't always work as intended. Motorists ignore them. Then I asked about getting a traffic light installed at Cranberry Street and was told it's a chicken and an egg situation. There's not enough traffic to warn a light, but maybe there's not enough traffic because motorists and pedestrians and cyclists know, "Don't try crossing there, because you're going to take your life in your hands." The second illuminating moment was when someone asked during that teams meeting yesterday with the new design whether they could turn right on red while going north on State Street and entering the Parkway heading east. And I thought, first of all, the answer is no. There's not going to be a right turn on red there. And I thought, how fast are you trying to get out of Erie that you can't pause for a few minutes there? You have to turn right on red to get onto the Parkway? And the- And the third illuminating moment for me was in Erie Times news story earlier this week when the site administrator for the Maritime Museum called the road an expressway. He actually got it right. It's an expressway where the roundabouts are gonna slow traffic down at those two spots and then motorists will speed up again. An expressway. I looked at that, then I looked, I wanna thank the city solicitor. He does a great job for us in terms of memorandums of understanding, but believe it or not, I went back to the Frontier Park memorandum of understanding, which was signed in 2010 for 25 years. And it was signed with the intention that Leaf, that nonprofit, would have an environmental plan to improve Frontier Park. And now we're having those giant slides, which might be a good idea. I take my grandchildren down slides, but never anything that big. But that's far removed from the intent of when city council pretty much handed over control of Frontier Park to a nonprofit. So I'm thinking 10 years from now, I don't want my name associated with those roundabouts. 10 years from now, when climate change is worse and when we've changed our driving habits, I don't wanna be associated with the roundabout. Again, this is not a criticism of anybody involved. I see Jenny Granger out there. What a great job she's done in reaching out to us. What great accommodations have been made, changes have been made, but this is my conscience. Thanks for listening.
Anybody else have comments? Are we short?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank all the people that were involved with the bayfront. But my issue, and it's not just with the Bayfront Parkway, it's with speeding in the city of Erie. And I didn't ask the police to bring up numbers of how many accidents have been on the Parkway or how many motor vehicle accidents are in the city of Erie. But I do know for certain, I am in my car a lot and I use the Bayfront Parkway and other city streets a lot. And I can tell you, I too am in a hurry at times and I may go five, six miles per hour over the speed limit, but people are passing me at dangerous speeds and it has to stop. The other day, last week, I was driving home up Bird Drive and there was a semi truck. They were working on 28th Street, East 28th and Bird Drive, doing the milling and stuff. They did a new road there. It's about a week or two weeks ago. I'm going up Bird Drive. I'm the first person. The truck was huge and so it blocked the road. And being the first person, knowing that I could not proceed, I stopped. The person behind me thought they could go forward. I put my hand out the window to say, no, look, there's a semi blocking the road. As soon as that semi parked and I proceeded, I had two cars speeding past me, even though I was going at a decent mile an hour. I go down that Bayfront Highway at least once or twice a day, and I am forever getting passed at dangerous speeds. And I have tried to say something to people and it falls on deaf ears. I know there are accidents. I have seen them. I have taken pictures of them. I know there are accidents along that road. And yet, it continues to be a problem. So yesterday, I'm leaving school and I'm stressed, you know, it's been a long day. And I just went right from school to the open house project. And on my way out the door, I happened to tell a coworker where I was going, that I was not going home, I still had places to go. And she said, oh, roundabouts. Put my voice in there and say no to roundabouts. Then afterwards, I brought the pamphlet to a group of people I have dinner with every Tuesday, and I passed it along and they said, who wants roundabouts? So I'm just telling you, my experience, it might be a good thing for some people, but it's going to cause a problem. It's going to continue like Liz mentioned, the speed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Anybody else for the good of the order? If not, let's vote.
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. Keys? Mrs. Schoff?
No.
Mr. Wunarski? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Brzezinski? Motion passes five to two. Let's take this to committee reports.
It's been brought to our attention that the third-class city code requests a five-minute time limit when we give our committee reports. So unless there are extenuating circumstances, we should probably follow that law. Laurie, keep the five-minute tab.
Got it.
Okay. So that's who we're at right now. Let's start with Ms. Allen.
I don't know who brought that to your attention, but I would think sometimes committee reports have to be longer depending on how many meetings you go to. And I go to a lot of meetings, so pay attention to the ones who say they have no committee report. Anyhow, I was gonna elaborate a little bit on the ARP process and the meetings that we've had, but if anybody, if any people out there would like to know what council is doing on ARP, how our committees are organized, and what kind of meetings we've had, please contact me. I attended the Historic Review, what are we called? Historic Review Commission meeting on Monday as the liaison to that. It's a really great working group because it's a small membership, but they're all taking various policy issues and reviewing that. We also heard a presentation from John Persinger from EDDC about seeking historic register status for what's called the DeLuca Building, which actually I think is called the Wright Block. And we heard from a consultant from Buffalo that EDDC has hired, and she went through the whole history of that entire building there. Really interesting to find how the different merchants that have been there over the year. So that was, that was great. On September 23rd at four o'clock, there's gonna be a dedication at Fourth and Chestnut, the corner there, to Scotty Askin Jr., the late proprietor of Farrell's Supermarket. He did a lot for the community. He always gave back in terms of organizing Thanksgiving dinners for people at the Martin Luther King Center. In his personal, in his, actually in his obituary, I found out that when he was a teenager, he rescued a girl from a fire. So, and this is the person, when Evan Torres came to being asked about renaming the street, that's kind of what set me on the whole, the whole route of trying to figure out how streets get honorarily designated in Erie. So that's at four o'clock on September 23rd. It will be unveiled. And Laurie, how much time do I have left? Wow, okay. So I wanna, I wanna just point out that I wear all these different hats. This is, this is not my Sea Wolves hat. This is my, pay attention, I'm talking, with the Kamala Harris quote on it, but it serves sort of to look like a baseball cap. I just wanted to thank the Sea Wolves for a really great promotion, a week, the week of Labor Day weekend when they brought in the three actors who played the Wonders in the movie, That Thing You Do. And even though I work at the Sea Wolves, my husband works there, what I wanna say is that they figured out that there is something about Erie that is special. And I will tell you, if you look at any of the tweets from those three actors, Tom Everett Scott, John Cisack, and Steve Zahn doesn't tweet, they are continuing to tweet about Erie. There was even another one today where they're posing in their jerseys and they said, caption this. So Erie got a lot of mileage out of it, and I'm hoping it can continue so that people know that thing that we do is not just about baseball, but it's about community spirit, why we love Erie and what makes us special. Thank you. Oh, but this is a signed jersey from John Rossoff, who's the catcher for the Sea Wolves. This was a fundraiser to help an organization that helps people with dyslexia called Noticeability. And the guy's a catcher, but the, actually, the night that the, I think it was the night the Wonders were here, the Sea Wolves had gone through so many pitchers that they had to bring in a position player to pitch the ninth inning, so, and he got all the outs, even though the Sea Wolves lost.
Thank you. Good job. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had several meetings I wanted to report here. I did attend the Council of Governments, the ARP funding presentation. I just wanted to thank Jessica Ramcoonsow and the COG for putting this presentation on. They talked about the replacement, or the revenue replacement calculator, which was interesting, the reporting of the projects. They explained and discussed, there's a lot of good questions. So it was kind of a, you know, we've heard some of this information before, so it was good to actually see how it's being applied, and I think it was very well attended. So it was definitely well worth it. Also attended the 9/11 20th anniversary service. It was an honor to attend, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Kathy Schoff also attended, but it was great to really come together with the community to reflect on that, on that day, to really honor the victims of the attacks and everyone who really stepped up to the plate, firefighters, police, emergency personnel, military, you know, who came to the rescue and to, and to continue to serve our country. So I just want to mention that it was, it was a really great ceremony. Also, as Liz reported, the Historic Review Commission was on the 13th. And some of this I won't repeat too much, but we had the national register nomination reviewed, the Wright Block. People more commonly know it as a DeLuca Building, a fifth and state. The application was presented and we took, there were some questions and the HRC did approve the application. Other, other activities that we're doing is the preservation planner position's gonna be chosen soon and the person will start next month. So I'll be excited so we can really get, hit the ground running. There's been a lot of work going so far, but now we'll be able to have a person really spending some time putting this, helping putting this together. And Kathy Ryrosik, she's really done a great job so far without this, without the help so far. We also discussed a lot of the procedural issues and processes. A lot, a lot of members have studied certain, certain aspects and we're gonna bring that together. For the Bayfront Parkway meeting, I attended, there was a lot of good questions and discussion. I again wanna thank PennDOT for, for all the work they've done. There was a good, good attendance from what we hear to the meetings, that's always good. I'm really interested to see what's gonna happen with the bridge, the several options for the bridge design, the pedestrian bridge at Holland Street. I know the community's gonna give some input there, so I'm really looking to see what, what type of ideas that they, that they kind of go to. So looking forward to that. But as for the project, there's many more details to go, many more decisions to go. And I think that as these plans come together, it'll be exciting to actually see something go down there. And the last one I wanted to mention was the Erie Parking Authority Board meeting I attended. We had our, the engineers do the maintenance reports came, they talked about the, the work that's recommended. Again, there's a lot of work with our parking garages. I think the total was 13.6 million dollars in renovation work that's recommended. Some of it's minor, but some of it's very important with some immediate repairs needed. So I'm sure if anyone, anyone's been in the garage, they've seen some of that. So there's definitely some investment that needs to occur there. And then also, the administration had sent over the municipal agreement that we've been talking about for a while now. It's an interim agreement that's been proposed in response to the Erie Parking Authority's proposal to the city. This proposal includes a hybrid reinforcement, collections by the Erie Parking Authority, which will reduce city hall visitors, free up space, and there's some long-term savings there. And then the EP, the Parking Authority's guaranteeing the $500,000 to the city as proposed. But there is a comprehensive parking study that's being recommended. It would not start for a while, but in the meantime, there's been discussion about some immediate changes to be proposed. So that's a very important, there's been a lot of ideas about what to do with parking and I know no one wants to just jump into that and just make a decision. So they're looking to do a comprehensive parking study instead of just small decisions here and there. So I suggested that the Erie Parking Authority put together a list of what they'd like to, you know, some of the ideas they have now that they don't wanna wait for the study to be done, to really take action on. And then we'll present those to council and have a, have a possible follow-up discussion on that, a study session. That's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Ms. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the Labor Day Parade and it's always an event that is very well put on and you can tell that the people who participate believe in their workforce. I attended the Bayfront Parkway Open House and I'm thankful for the public being able to say what they would like to see, and I also look forward to what they choose. I am looking forward to attending the Rib Fest that's going on right now outside, and I'm glad that money is going to the Quinte demolition because it is a definite thing that is definitely needed by the neighborhood people around there. There had been homeless people and whatnot, like Liz had mentioned rats and problems in that area, so I'm sure they'll be very thankful when that's all cleaned up. I was out at the peninsula and saw the marathon runners. It's good to see the people running again and enjoying the peninsula at the Running Club. I was not able to attend an event and this morning, and Liz, you inspired me by thanking me and said it was good. So I'm gonna read that. I think I can get it in within my five minutes. It was for preemption of the wage with Erie United and Elspeth Kate had invited me to attend, but I could not come. But I wrote something. To whom it may concern, during my four years of city council, I have witnessed a lot of volatility in the financial stability of people's livelihoods. People have reached out to me asking for assistance to help them pay utilities, pay rent, pay bills. They have asked how I can lead them to organizations that will protect them from losing their homes or how they can improve their life situation. I have heard too many stories of people working more than two jobs to try to get by on a daily basis. Gone are the days of having one stable, comfortable job to sustain you and a loved one into the golden years of retirement. People are exhausted, people are sick, people are stressed out physically, mentally, financially. Quality of lives have drastically been changed by COVID-19 and other debilitating circumstances or diseases like cancer, et cetera, and way too many people consider themselves the working poor. Their wages may not give them the assistance to get some needed extra help. They work and take turns as to what bills will get paid during a particular pay period. And as a concerned city councilwoman, I cannot ignore the plight of the working poor. Too many of my constituents are working at minimum wage jobs that were never meant to be a life sustaining wage for them or their families. Minimum wage jobs years ago were relatively for first-time employees in high school, getting experience they needed to get some spending money for entertainment, clothes, or school savings. $7.25 an hour is a slap in the face to a wage earner in the year 2021. When will we, a governing body in Pennsylvania, actually support a $15 minimum wage to give people a positive start? People should not have to work three jobs, 60-plus hours a week, to put food on the table and... table and sustain a roof over their heads. People deserve better. They need time to relax and enjoy their hobbies and their loved ones. Our government leaders need to understand and not undermine the current urgency of these times, and I advocate that we end wage preemption." And that's true. I hear people as I'm in line for a decaf coffee in the morning, or in line at the supermarket. We talk, we commiserate. Thank you.
Want to finish that sentence at least? Mr. Wierzke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the PennDOT officials who have been working diligently with both us and city council, with the administration, with both private and the public as a whole on trying to come up with plans and ideas for our Bayfront. I know every, no matter what improvements or developments are done in the city, whether it's in the city, outside the city, there's always, not everybody's going to agree, but I think, I honestly believe they went above and beyond to try to keep us involved with the process. As everybody knows here, a lot of money is being invested into this corner of the state. And we want to be a player and be, work with the state when it comes to those monies. So in the future, if more monies is available, and there's three or four or five municipalities looking to get a piece of that pie, that they'll look at Erie and say, hey, they're a community that wants to work with us and get something done, accomplish something, and better their area of the state. So I just want to thank them for their due diligence, putting up with us as we can be a pain once in a while, but we appreciate the effort and we continue to look for a great relationship moving forward. The other thing, I also did attend the 9/11 memorial, and I don't know if anybody had mentioned prior, but a former councilman, Mark Alexandrovich, honestly spearheaded us getting a piece of that history here as getting a beam from the World Trade Center. Although it was a sad day for America, it is a part of history. It's here now. I want to say September 12th. It did, I believe, bring America together, no matter race, color, creed, nationality, religion, Democrat, Republican. It brought America together as a whole to that extent. So I guess if we can take one positive out of that unfortunate time in our history, it did bring America together as all Americans. So I just, I don't know if he was ever recognized officially at one of our council meetings or, but I'd just like to acknowledge Mr. Alexandrovich for spearheading that piece of history here in Erie. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wierzke. Mr. Willispoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank James Shabrods, Executive Director of Martin Luther King Center, for putting together an organization along with Gary Horton and Director of Booker T. Washington Center. They have some very good plans. It's not a makeshift plan. He has been working on it for several years. Good job, sir. Like to thank Blair Mead and her executive team for their presentation to council in the caucus today. And maybe you should run for council because you came up on the podium here. And, you know, so there's three or four seats open, so maybe a write-in might not hurt. But thank you very much for bringing your business into the city and identifying that your jobs will start at $15 an hour, and we appreciate that very much. On a sad note, Mr. President, I lost two basketball players in a week. Al Farmer played at Gannon after I left. He was loved by many. He lived in New York. Last week, we buried Al. Today, I got a call, a gentleman that played with me, Jim Chatterton, his daughter informed me that he passed today. So I send out condolences and prayers to both of their families. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Willispoon. Great guy. Mr. Keith.
I know, already. Well, first, I'd like to say I attended both the online and in-person Zoom at PennDOT. They've, as an organization, come a tremendous way from a PennDOT that I once engaged with. And so I just want to salute them and the work that they've been doing in the northwest part of the state here. I did attend a online conversation about ARP funding, requests from the city, and it's an ongoing conversation, but it's importing conversations. And we do hear people like Freda. You know, that's one of the things that I said that in order for us to start giving out this pie, we have to know how many pieces are in this pie. And so as this ceremonial first dispersment has gone out today, we do have to keep track of what's, money's being spent on, who's getting the money, and how's it being applied. And that we must maintain the spirit of the ARP law, which was to uplift those who've been adversely affected by COVID and those marginalized communities. And never forget that in our ZEL to program, that this is the end goal, that that's the spirit of this law, and that's where these funds should go. I had the pleasure of attending the dedication of the new headquarters of Erie Insurance this morning. The building was dedicated to their former CEO, Thomas B. Hagan, and got a chance to tour the building. It is a magnificent site. For a building like this to be housed in Erie is absolutely wonderful. And so we just look forward to more investments, and we look forward into quality investments that are going to make our city better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. I do want to jump on that, first of all, to Mr. Hagan. You know, tributes and awards sometimes are given in the morning and gotten tonight. He's not a finer man in this area than Mr. Tom Hagan, and having that building named after him is even a small tribute. One of the greatest guys I've ever met, I'll tell you that, and I'm honored to call him my friend. I also like to thank all you folks that have come here today. And I envision someday that people like Ms. Mead's group will be filling the whole place with new ideas. Frank, you're killing me.
What's going on?
I don't know.
Anyway, we'll try it again. Must be my foghorn, I'm sorry. But it, again, a great tribute to a great man. I'd like to thank all the folks that are here tonight that made a lot of good things happen, and we look forward to continuing to have those good things happen. Mr. Mayor, I will remind you once more time, please don't forget the folks on a fixed income. There's a lot of folks here, I call them the shoulders of our community. They have kept Erie afloat. Everybody was hurting. Somehow, these folks retired for 15, 20 years or whatever, found a way to pay their taxes, pay their dues, pay their, pick up their prescriptions, and all they ask is us to give them a better city. So please, let's not forget looking at them when we do that. I think that's all I have. And going with that, Mr. Bedsa.
I have nothing.
Okay. Teresa on?
Nobody on.
Mr. Mayor, I think you have the floor.
Okay, I'll be as quick as I can here.
We'll give you more than five.
No, five should be enough. I did really enjoy the Erie Insurance event today, as Michael and you talked about. It was great. And one thing I would share is it costs a little over $100 million to build that building, and it took another $50 million to furnish it. So that was a huge investment in Erie. It's, I'm glad they're calling it the Thomas B. Hagan Building as well. Last night, I participated in a virtual meeting on youth violence in Erie, which unfortunately has escalated during COVID-19. It was led by Darryl Craig and Homer Smith and Terry Lang. Michael and I and Chief Dan were also on it. There was about 35 people on it, and it was primarily African-Americans trying to figure out what we can do. And we will continue to work on that. We're going to have future meetings and do all we can. We're working on next year's budget right now. Paul in the Finance Department's working on it. We hope to have that to you no later than mid-October, to explain and have meetings and go through that. Monday evening, or Monday afternoon, I spent the afternoon with Emergicare and one of their ambulances going around, just to experience what it was like. And unfortunately, there was a man on the east side whose heart stopped, and Erie firefighters were the first ones there, and they had been working about five minutes before I got there with the ambulance. And they worked on him for 25 minutes when I was there, but could not revive him, and finally had to call a doctor, and the doctor said, you should stop now. There's nothing more to do. That was, it was very shaking experience to go through watching that happen. I got to help a little bit actually with it, but I got to see kind of everything they do, including that, which was very moving. Tomorrow's press conference, I just wanted to let you know, we're going to have a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, which started on the 15th and goes till the 15th of next month. We're going to talk about the Erie firefighters. They're doing an event out at the peninsula for youth on fishing, again, to build better relationships between the firefighters and Erie youth. Jen Hoffman will be talking about Small Business Week and giving a Kiva update. Paramount Pursuits, we're going to get an update as well on the work they do with helping minorities and women primarily. They'll help white men too, but the focus is really primarily minorities and women start new businesses. And we'll also hear from Paramount Pursuits, as I just said, that does that. Also, Sarah Reed Manufacturing started 125 years, I think somebody talked about that on council already, the 125th year anniversary. And it's very impressive, the work they do, the unique things they do, what they present. We're going to do a proclamation for them tomorrow at the press conference as well. I just wanted to address the Bayfront Parkway for a moment, and I certainly respect Kathy and Liz and your vote, the way it went. I've been a big advocate of this. I really believe in what's going to happen in this four-block area. And I could be totally wrong, but I think it's going to accomplish exactly what you want, to slow down traffic on the Bayfront Parkway and make the Bayfront Parkway used by people that are going somewhere there or coming downtown, not people that are going to work in the morning and then coming home in the afternoon, which is when it's so busy. And the reason I think that is there's going to be about $5 million invested in 12th Street before the Bayfront Parkway is shut down, to make that faster to get across. And during construction, the Bayfront Parkway will probably be closed for several months of work that need to be done there. So traffic will have to move up to 12th Street. During that $5 million of work on 12th Street, one of the things they're going to do is put digital signs at the intersection of I-79 and 12th on the west side, and where you go up to I-90 on the east side. Those signs are going to say, if you go across 12th Street, it'll take you this long to get across town. If you go down the Bayfront Parkway, it'll take this long. And I'm really hoping, I don't know the numbers yet, but I'm hoping it's going to be a lot longer drive, you know, on the Bayfront Parkway.
You can make that happen there.
People hopefully are going to get used to using 12th Street when the Bayfront Parkway is closed, and it'll stay there because it's faster when it's done. So we'll see what happens, and if I'm wrong, I'll definitely admit it. I also want to thank all of council for approving the demolitions on West 12th and West 16th. That's really helping us move Erie forward. That will help everyone in Erie. And also, thank you very much for Joyce Savakio Park and approving the work there, which is going to provide jobs to people on the east side of Erie. This Friday, you're probably aware already, I just want to remind you, this Friday, that walking bridge across West 12th Street between Liberty and Cherry is coming down. So for one day, West 12th Street is going to be closed, but it's going to be great to have that down. It's this huge step towards improving West 12th Street. So thanks very much for the meeting this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Watson, you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Are you sure? You always do. I guess we'll say good night then. Thanks, folks.
City Council adjourned at 8:55 PM. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keith, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Wierzke, Mr. Witherspoon.